All right, we can call the meeting of the Foster City Planning Commission, the May 7, 2025 meeting to order. Mr. Trainer, can you call the roll, please?
That's Madam Chair. Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Krasner?
I'm here.
Madam Chair?
I'm here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Polinsky?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. So I think the first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Any requests for changes? If not, can we have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, no speaker series tonight. So our next item is receipt of petitions. Mr. Trainer, do we have any written correspondence?
We did not receive any written petitions, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anybody here to speak in person tonight?
I did not receive any speaker slips, and it does not appear anyone is here to speak either.
Okay. All right, so we can move along to our action items. The first action item is 6A, the West Falls S.E.E. Amendment, the grocer V.C.'s. Mr. Zhang? Or did you want to introduce this, Mr. Fuller, or do you want to just? Thank you.
I just wanted to introduce Henry Zhang, our acting deputy planning director. He'll be presenting this item tonight.
Great, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Zhang.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Henry Zhang. I was their planning department. Line four, Hoffmann Associates in care of the WF Developer LLC, request an amendment to the voluntary concessions approved by the city council on August 9, 2021, basically to reduce the minimum size of grocery space from 39,200 square feet to 32,900 square feet. This amendment is being proposed in response to the leasing reality of the grocery space. Update to this staff report from the April 23th work session highlighted in gray. Basically, three questions were asked and the answer has been provided. That started from line 21 all the way to line 40. The city council held its first work session on April 7, and then referred to the planning commission on the April 14 meeting. Planning commission held its work session on April 23, and next step will be city council will have a public hearing and final consideration on May 12. Staff recommend that planning commission make a positive recommendation to the city council on TR 25-09 for council's final consideration at their scheduled May 12 public hearing. Hoffmann Associates have representative Ms. Mary Beth Avadizian also join us tonight through Teams, and I saw her camera has been turned on. That's the end of my presentation. Thank you. I'll be available to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Mr. Zhang. Ms. Avadizian, did you have any comments that you wanted to make before we open it up to the commissioners?
No, I have no comments to add. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you. All right, well, we saw this item in work session last time. Had some discussion about it. Is there any further questions that have come up for tonight? Okay, just one, Mr. Duncan.
Just one, doesn't really specifically relate to the item, but I mean to the particulars. But did we ask you last time what the timetable is for sealing the deal and getting started on work and opening and so forth? I can't remember.
Oh, no, I don't think we talked about that.
I know, it's a little tangent, but while we've got you here, Mary Beth, I just wondered if you had anything to say about that.
The lease with the fresh market is a signed lease, and it has been signed since last summer. They have recently submitted their plans for their buildout of their store to the city for review, for their first review comments. Once they get an approved permit, which I don't know how long that will take, I guess depends on how extensive the comments are that they have to respond to, then they will proceed into construction of the tenant buildout. We are roughly making some assumptions about the timing for permit and the timing for buildout. Think that the store will be open third or fourth quarter of next year.
Okay, thank you. And could I ask, the parking we did discuss a little bit last time, is the notion that most people who are driving are going to be coming from the east and passing the store and turning into the garage that's beyond the store, or what's the primary entrance and exit for the parking for the store?
There is an entrance off of Haycock Road that there'll be a traffic light at Haycock and a new street that we built called Magnolia, and there'll be signage directing people into that entrance of the parking garage. Thank you, that's very helpful. So I'm not able to use my cursor, but maybe someone can point to where they show the corner of the D3 Phase 2 building and then the A1 building. There's this little street called Magnolia Street. That is, thank you, that's an entrance into the parking garage. Once they enter that, you'll be below this grade that we're looking at currently, and you'll be entering, taking a left into the garage under the A1 building, and there'll be 120 dedicated parking spaces just for the grocer, and they'll have signage and whatnot to make sure it's clear where patrons can park. So that's the primary entrance into their parking space.
Okay, thank you. And this is an operational question, so forgive me if I'm jumping ahead, but what's the parking regime going to amount to? Are you gonna, you know, hand out vouchers or?
Oh, yeah, 90 minutes of validated parking.
Validation.
For anybody coming in.
Okay, so 90 minutes free with validation in the store.
With validation, correct.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, thank you, Mr. Duncan. Any other questions? If not, does somebody want to make a motion? Oh, sorry, is this a public hearing?
It is.
It is, okay. Thank you, Mr. Trainer. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this item tonight? Seeing none, I think we can close the public hearing. Okay. There's no further discussion. Would somebody like to make the motion?
I can do it.
Okay, Mr. Krasner, thanks. Please do the honors.
Yeah, I'm happy to do it. Yeah, I don't have any questions tonight. I had a few questions in the work session that the applicant was able to answer, and I appreciated the frank discussion we had about the state of, you know, the grocery business in the city and in the region, and also the reality of the lease. And well, initially, I had, again, I wouldn't call them concerns, but just those questions, those were sufficiently answered. And I think ultimately, you know, the grocery store will still be what was intended, but the initial approval is substantially so, and now there's an additional 6,000 odd square feet that can be leased for a different business. So, you know, as far as the fiscal benefit, which was the point of having these types of conditions in the voluntary concessions, I think the intent of that, the spirit of what was approved originally is still going to be met with this relatively minor change. So with that as a preamble, I'll go ahead and make the motion again. This is TR 25-09, resolution to amend the voluntary concessions, community benefits, terms and conditions associated with the West Falls Church Economic Development Project, also known as West Falls, special exception entitlement approved by resolution 2021-23 dated August 9, 2021, to reduce the minimum size of the grocery store component from 39,200 square feet to 32,900 square feet. Whereas, an application for a special exception entitlement amendment and related revision to the approved voluntary concessions, community benefits, terms and conditions approved by the city council on August 9, 2021 for the West Falls Economic Development Project has been submitted by Hoffmann and Associates care of WF Developer LLC pursuant to the procedure set forth in sections 48-90 and 48-488B, special exception entitlement of the city zoning code. And whereas Hoffmann and Associates co-WF Developer LLC filed an application to amend the West Falls S.E.E. voluntary concessions, specifically provision number two, on March 25, 2025, to reduce the minimum gross floor area of the grocery store from 39,200 square feet to 32,900 square feet, to reflect the fully executed lease agreement with the grocer tenant. And whereas, the planning commission finds that the limited proposed changes and amendment to the voluntary concessions is reasonable, reflects leasing realities, and is consistent with the previous West Falls project S.E.E. approvals and objectives, and that there are no other changes to the mixed-use projects, land uses, development program, conceptual development plan, or special exception site plan. Now, I therefore move that the planning commission recommend approval of this item, TR 25-09, to the city council for their public hearing and action on May 12, 2025. That's my motion.
I can second that.
Thank you both. Thank you, Mr. Krasner. Mr. Trainer, would you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Polinsky?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes. 5-0.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Avadizian and Mr. Zhang for being with us tonight. Good luck.
Thank you, you're much. Thank you.
Okay. I think our next action item is our Planning Commission minutes from our April 23 meeting. Any changes? I noticed one typo, Mr. Stevens' name. Did you catch that? There's an extra three.
It's line 15. There's a
Yeah, it was towards the top.
Number three in there.
That was the only thing I noted. Yeah, his sci-fi name. Any other changes? Did you catch anything? Nope. Okay, motion to approve?
Subdued.
As amended?
As amended? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. All right, I think we are on to our work session item, running a little ahead of schedule. And tonight, we are hearing about the affordable living policy. Mr. Fuller, would you like to introduce this item?
Yes, thank you. We have a work session scheduled tonight, the affordable living policy. We have Dana Jones, the housing director, here, and she'll be presenting. Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Jones. Nice to see you, Dana.
Good evening. Dana Jones, I'm the Director of Housing and Human Services for the City of Falls Church, and I'm here to talk about the affordable living policy. We've been working very closely with planning staff. Emily has guided us, well, first it was Paul, and then now it's Emily. She's kind of guided us through the whole process and has been invaluable. So I'm just gonna kind of give you an update. We have a draft, and my purpose tonight is just to get your feedback. We're not asking you to take an action right now. We'll be going to council, and then we'll come back to you and ask you to take an action. Is that correct? Okay. All right, so you can go ahead and go to the presentation. Okay, so we are hoping to have the policy adopted in August of this year. So you can go to the next slide. All right, so the affordable living policy is a policy that we update every five years, and it's important because the city uses it as a tool to kind of determine how much affordable housing we should provide. And so what is affordable housing? So just to give you an idea of what affordable housing is, it's any household should not be paying any more than 30% of their total household income towards housing. And that comes, that's a HUD standard that all the localities follow. And that could be anybody. So someone could be very low income, someone could be very high income, and still, if they're paying more than 30% of their total salary, then, you know, that would not be affordable to them. A lot of people are, you know, one paycheck away from that, you know, so just to give you an idea of what that is. So the HUD standards that we use for all of our housing programs in pretty much every locality, we use the HUD AMIs, and that's the area median income. So you're looking at Northern Virginia, Maryland, and DC. We're all part of the same group. So low income is going to be 30 to 50% AMI. So we're talking $46,000 a year to $77,000 a year. And that's for, so they're saying a household of four, the average income for an household of four is $154,700. So all of these are based off of that. So like I said, low income is 30 to 50, moderate income would be 51 to 80. So that would be $78,000 to $123,000. And then workforce income would be $81,000 to $110,000. So that would be, that household would have $124,000 to $185,000. So that's the standard that we use for all of our programs. We base all of our rents off of that, and we annually update the rents because those HUD AMIs change every year. So you can go to, oh, so, and then this year is different because we are now begun, this affordable living policy has never been a part of the comprehensive plan. But staff and the city attorney determined that it should become an amendment to the comprehensive plan, and we're pretty excited about that because that's going to give this more teeth. And so Emily, I won't get into what the comprehensive plan is because I'm sure you guys know that since this is the planning department. But, so the affordable living policy includes categories, goals, priorities, strategies to achieve those goals. It has an action plan at the back of the document. And we also have a monitoring plan that we're going to use. We actually have a housing dashboard, an affordable housing dashboard that we're going to put up as soon as it's, as soon as this is adopted. It's all set to go. So we're just waiting. And so you'll be able to see in real time how we're doing every year to meet these goals. So you can go to the next slide. So the, like I said, the purpose of the policy is to identify key demographic and housing supply data. We kind of looked at all the housing policies and programs. We looked at all of the neighboring jurisdictions and took all that information and then determined what our housing goals should be and how we're going to meet them. You can go to the next slide. So this was the work group members that we had. It was a really diverse group. We were really proud of that. We had, you can see, we had a mortgage lender, we had two developers, we had someone from the planning commission, Derek. He was great. He kept us on track and, you know, spoke his mind. And we really needed that because he had a lot of background and knowledge that was really helpful to the group. I mean, he was really helpful. And we had some renters, some homeowners. We had the director of the homeless shelter, their board. So we had a really diverse schools, employees, really good diverse groups. So you can go to the next. And so these were the focus areas that we had: rental housing, homeownership, diversity of housing stock, preservation of affordable housing, unhoused and wraparound services, funding and governance. So those were the categories. You can go to the next slide. So looking at this, I told you that it's now going to be part of Chapter 10, the housing in the comprehensive plan, Housing a Complete Community. And the stars are next to the goals that the work group met on November 20th and determined that some of these goals needed to be priorities. And so if you see a yellow star, that means it's a priority. And a lot of them we're already working on already. So you can go to the next slide. This just shows you what the table of contents, all the pieces that are in there. So I don't know if you've had a chance to read it. It is a draft. It's pretty big because we, you know, changed the fonts and all of that so that it was ADA accessible, and I added some pages to it. But you can go to the next page. So the first category is rental housing. And so, let's see, so these are the three goals that are under there. So the first one is a priority goal. And what we want to do is, and this is a stretch goal, currently, we are getting about 6% of affordable housing from any new development. The work group would like to increase that to 12%. It may or may not happen, but it's a goal. So we put that there. And then goal two is, so the housing commission had targets, housing targets, and that was kind of a basis for when we started with the policy. And so we would like to, the group would like to increase the percentage of affordable units in the city from 3% to 6%, so that, so all housing units, it would be 6% of them would be affordable. And then the third one would be the deeply affordable, so those I told you that are at that 30 to 50% units, we would like to increase that to 25% of the total affordable units. And so just to kind of like give you an idea of what the housing, affordable housing programs that the city has right now, we have the Affordable Dwelling Unit Program. That program, we negotiate with developers to get a reduced rent for a certain number of units. And like Rice said, we're averaging about 6%. We got 10% at one property. So that's how the Affordable Dwelling Unit Program works. And then the CCAU program is the City Committed Affordable Unit Program. We didn't really have a program in the city that was addressing the need for people at really low income. And so that's why we developed this program that serves people at 50% AMI and lower. And so we have 12 units currently, which is not a lot, but our waiting list is seven, we have 700 people currently on the waiting list trying to to get units. And over 50% of those people are at the very low income. So, that kind of shows you that we need to increase that stock. We have, you know, like, half that list is people that are below 50% AMI. And so, let's see. And so, just to give you an idea, so, a low-income rent in the city would be $1,354. A moderate rent would be $1,895. And then, a workforce rent would be $2,707. So, that just kind of gives you an idea of what the rents are that people that are, that are in our program are paying. You can go to the next slide. So, homeownership. So, the city currently has an affordable homeownership program where we are using Amazon funds to, and we work with the nonprofit in the city, and we purchase units for, we purchase them at a market rate, and then we sell, we put in $20,000 worth of improvements, and then we sell them at a reduced rate. And so, it was a really, a priority goal to increase first-time homeownership opportunities in the city because before we had this program, we haven't had any homeownership opportunities for anybody like between 80% and 120% AMI since 2008. In the last two years, we've sold 10 homes with this program. So, we're pretty proud and excited about that. They were townhomes and condos, but these are opportunities that, you know, were not available. And so, we want to increase that. And I think one of them was a single-family home. And then, Goal Five is we want to incentivize developments of affordable homeownership units in our ADU program and try to help new homebuyers. And that's like city employees, schools, employees that wanna purchase after they've been running. So, you can go to the next slide. And then, our next category is preservation. And so, we want to retain the affordability of the existed committed affordable units in the city right now. And we're slated to lose some, but we want to have, you know, we don't wanna, you know, we want to have a zero net loss of the committed affordable units that we have in the city. So, those would be our ADUs. We have some units, five buildings at Virginia Village, so those would be committed. And then, there are teacher workforce units at the Reed Building. There are nine units over there which are also committed. And so, we also want to preserve units, come up with a way to preserve units that are expiring. For example, Pearson Square, we have 15 units at Pearson Square that are expiring in 2025. So, we're trying to, you know, be creative about, you know, what could possibly be done to possibly retain those units. Also, the Fields is a big concern. That's 96 units of housing. They're all at 60% AMI, and those are due, set to expire in the future. We want to try to make sure that we don't lose those units as well. And then, Goal Seven is we want to make sure that people, that as they age, that they can stay where they live and, you know, that they don't have to move. You can go to the next slide. And then, the next category is housing stock. We want to make sure that there's enough housing stock along the spectrum. Because like I told you, that homeownership program, if it wasn't for townhomes and condos and that diversity of housing stock, it would be really difficult for a lot of people to purchase. So, we want to have a diversity of housing stock, duplexes, multifamily units. And so, we're really excited about the accessory dwelling unit, you know, that's coming along, and also the T-zone, and all of these things are gonna help us to achieve that. And then, Goal Nine is we want to encourage larger household units and multifamily properties. And so, people, when they come to us and get on our waitlist, the majority of them want either a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom. And so, we want to try to make sure that we have enough of those. And then, we want to promote policies that increase housing stock diversity and density. So, let's see. Yeah, I think that's pretty much. So, you can move to the next one. So, unhoused and wraparound services. With this goal, we're trying to reach people at 0% AMI, like even less than 30%. So, homeless to, you know, we want to have a range from homeless to 110% so that everybody gets covered. And so, we want to expand housing and service options for persons with incomes at 0% to 30% AMI and persons with disability. Currently, in the city Winter Hill Apartments, they serve people, seniors and persons with disabilities. That's 80 units of housing in the city. And maybe about 70 of those folks that live at Winter Hill are using housing choice vouchers to afford to live there. And we want to retain and expand unhoused services at the property yard. We know that that's a long time coming. It's a long-term plan. But, our group is advocating that we don't lose the 12 beds that we currently have at the winter shelter. It's 10 beds for males and two beds for women, and we'd like to expand that so that more women can stay there and possibly have a year-round shelter in the future because it is a winter shelter. And then, we are anticipating the loss of Medicaid or something along that line with the current administration and, you know, news that we're hearing down the pipeline. I've been going to a lot of meetings with human services directors, and we are anticipating cuts to Medicaid. So, we want to prepare for that and advocate for an expansion of Medicaid and be prepared for when those cuts do come. So, you can go to the next stage. Oh, and I will mention here, so, human services in the city, we have seen, you know, just from what we have experienced in our human services specialists, an increase in homelessness in the city. And we think that's because of mental health needs and also substance abuse. And so, when people in the city see folks, they call our office, and then our office works with the police department. They have an officer who specifically works with that, and we'll go out, visit those folks, and see what it is that we can do to meet their needs. Now, when we meet with someone, sometimes housing can be offered and services can be offered, but that doesn't mean that the person is gonna accept that offer. I mean, we cannot force people to go into housing. Some people have income, but, you know, we, you know, we do the best that we can. So, you can go to the next slide. The next one is funding, and we're doing a lot in this area. We want to make sure that people understand what the housing needs are. We wanted to secure a dedicated annual and indexed source of funding. We've done, taken a big step with that. Our Affordable Housing Fund, which is a pot of money, which developers put contributions in, and then city council makes an annual contribution. We are now making that a long-range plan that runs concurrent with the CIP. And that's as a result of council last year revising their financial policies and saying that they want the Affordable Housing Fund to run with the CIP. That's, we feel like that's a really good thing because we have long-range needs, like, for example, the Fields and some of those other things I talked about. We need to start planning to meet those needs, and it's gonna be a long-range plan. And so, we have, some of the categories that we have in that long-range plan are CCAU program, the Affordable Homeownership Program, the Acquisition Strike Fund, which is Virginia Village. We've purchased five quads in Virginia Village, and our long-term plan is to do something in that area to provide more affordable housing, maybe some consolidation. You know, that hasn't been outlined, but that's one thing we want to do. The city does receive housing grants from CDBG and HUD, and we provide those to three nonprofits in the city that are housing nonprofits. And then, the other one is, we are doing a housing needs assessment, and we have a housing preservation fund where we're setting money aside to meet those needs. And then, like I said, we want to commit annual funding for at least five years and target annual amount of affordable housing funding by 2040 to $1,680, you know, here. And that is a stretch goal. That is what the work group is recommending. So, you can go to the next page. So, as far as governance, we want to strengthen the existing policy structure by updating the legal authority. We feel like that now that we're a part of the comp plan, we'll be able to do a lot more of that and have a lot more teeth here, so we're excited about that. We want to, and Goal 19 is a big one. We want to enhance transparency and make sure that people that use our programs are at the table. This is kind of my soapbox. I see a lot of commissions in the city that are making a lot of decisions about a lot of people, and those people are not at the table, and that's not right. So, that's why we wanted to make sure that our work group included folks in the community that are renters, homeowners, users of our programs, all different incomes, all different races, so that, you know, they are having a say-so in policies that affect them, workers at all different incomes. You know, we want to make sure, because we have, I think, 11% of our ADU program are city staff and school staff, you know, people that come in and are looking for housing. So, we want to make sure that those people get a say-so. So, that's really important. And we want to make sure that we maintain dialogue with our partners. HSEC, the Human Services Advisory Council, and the Housing Commission have decided to have more combined meetings because housing and human services go together. And so, we need to work together to accomplish goals. We have a combined meeting next week, as a matter of fact. So, those are some of the things that we're trying to do with governance. So, you can go to the next. So, this is our timeline for adoption. We're at 5:7, I mean, yeah, 5:7, the Planning Commission. So, you can see what's here. We're gonna come back to you guys June 9th. And you'll be, it'll be referred to you June 9th. And then, I'm sorry, this is like an eye test. I'm trying to see. And then, we'll have a work session June 18th. And then, we'll be asking for official action from you all July 16th. Hopefully, we'll be getting adopted August 11th. You can go to the next page. So, like I said, the purpose of tonight is just to kind of get feedback from you all on all of our different topic areas. You can either give that to me now, or you can send that feedback to Jack, and he can send it to me, you can send it to me directly, however you'd like to do it. But, our purposes, well, he went to the Economic Development Authority last night. We wanted their feedback with regards to how does this affect workers and, you know, that kind of thing. As far as the economic aspect, what were their thoughts? With you all, we just want to know as far as planning and, you know, what your priorities, how does this fit in there? Do you think we've covered everything? What are your thoughts? So, and I forgot to mention Andrea Kane was also represented you all at one. I think you filled in for Derek a couple of times.
I tagged in on the early, some of the early meetings.
We appreciate that.
Yeah.
So, it's up to you what, how you would like to give that feedback, but we're in draft stage, and so we are open to hearing feedback from you all. That concludes my presentation. Just wanted to give you an idea of what we're trying to do here. Any questions for me?
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Jones. That was a really comprehensive overview. I was, yeah, like, like I said, I was lucky to get to be part of this group in the early stages. And it was like a really diverse group. I think you did a great job of bringing people in from the industry and from the community and from a lot of different backgrounds. So, yeah, I am a strong proponent of your goal to kind of make sure that everybody who's affected by these decisions has a seat at the table. I think that's really important. So, I'm really glad that you took the extra step to make sure that was happening. So, yeah, that said, I know I have some questions for Ms. Jones, and I'm sure some other folks do here, so if you wouldn't mind sticking around with us for a little bit, we can just have maybe a little conversation. Anybody want to go first? Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, I just had one question regarding Goal Eight, Diversity of Housing Stock.
Yes.
You had in there accessory dwellings, I think you had townhouses, and just wondering if you considered including cottage housing in that list.
That would be a good addition.
We would love for cottage housing. Our focus here was kind of affordable housing. The cottage housing that's currently in the cities, we think is great because there needs to be a diversity of housing stock. It's not necessarily affordable. But, if there could be some affordable cottage housing, that would be fabulous. Maybe accessory dwellings might get us to that. But, we would be in full support of that if there would be some way to make it affordable.
Right.
I mean, our focus was affordability.
Yeah, I think flagging it as another housing type that is available in the city, and then, and then thinking how we can layer it on to make it affordable.
That's right.
That's what I would.
We're coming up with an incentive program. Say, you know, if you make one unit or two units, whatever the size of the, make it affordable, then you can, you know, have reduced setbacks or some, some kind of a benefit to encourage that.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
You go first.
Okay, Mr. Duncan, you're up.
Thank you. Go back to your slide if you would about the percentage of affordable units in the newer buildings, the goal to increase. Yeah, thank you. So, my recollection of how this framework of numbers evolved over the last 12 or so years is that, yeah, as you say, 6% was sort of the standard, maybe 15 years ago, 12 years ago certainly. And the characteristics of the councils over the years led to a nudging up of that number. We went to 8, 10, 12. I think founders too is at least 12. One suggestion would just be to have a, and maybe this is in the Fuller Report, but would be to have a chart that shows that, the percentage, just so you can pull it right out and see it. And also, I recall that we ended up in a sort of a quiet discussion with our legal authorities over the city's right to, let me put it this way, there were concerns that we appeared to be requiring a certain percentage of affordable housing, and we're instructed that that actually can't be done according to Preston and other cases in Arlington. And it was a real, it was a behind-the-scenes battle, but there was a lot of push and pull between certain members of council and certain members of staff over this question. I'm all on board, of course, for the number going up, but I remember when Derek was on the Planning Commission, you know, like, why don't we just raise the number? Well, you know, there's a reason that we didn't just raise the number because we didn't want to get ourselves into some sort of lawsuit situation. Fortunately, we had a, you know, good working relationship with pretty well all the developers that came through and put up the newer buildings, but it was handled more subtly than, you know, a big chart that says, we're gonna go from 6 to 12.
Yeah.
Just to avoid any problems.
Well, and this is a goal. And I mean, we're recommending this, but, you know, it's not law. You know what I mean? All of, some of these are stretch goals. So, whatever we can receive would be good. And like you said, like, I think at Broad and Washington, we received 10%, but it's not really usable because at Broad and Washington, we have, I believe we have studios that are at 80% AMI. They're on the higher end. And so, those rents are $1,856. And so, we can't really rent them because, you know, that is a lot of money for a studio when you can get a, you know, a lower-income studio somewhere else. So, we've been able to rent two of those, but we would prefer for, you know, if we go up to 10%, that we don't do that with the, you know, have them too high of an income where we rent, you know, we can't rent them because it's, it's not really useful for us.
Yeah, I remember a lot of push and pull over, we want larger units so that we can get families in, and what we want and what the developers penciled out in their, you know, pro formas was not, not always meeting. And, you know, we would try, try to come to an accommodation that was agreeable to them and didn't end up with, you know, legal battles or whatever stalls in the process that would prevent the building from being built at all. Yeah, just a sensitivity to that. Yeah, just a sensitivity to that, that this is a goal and that it is a process in Virginia, according to the way things are done in Virginia, that involves negotiation through the SE process with all parties involved, so that it's not a requirement, but it's a component of the package of special exception.
And we anticipate some changes in the future, some legislation passed this year with regards to provision of ADUs and affordable housing. I'll send it to you, I don't have it with me right now, but.
Yeah, that's not, that's not a good area that, that, yeah, will be interesting to follow. A second thing was, on my mind, was the, I glance at my notes here and make sure I don't skip something else that I wanted to ask about. Actually, I'll leave that for, maybe somebody else will bring it up, I'll leave that for later.
You can always give me a call.
Yeah, right, I know where to find you. Thanks, appreciate it.
Great. Mr. Plinsky, did you want to jump in?
Just a couple of questions. Thanks for your presentation. That was really, I'm a relatively new member of the Planning Commission, so that was really useful for me. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
You had said earlier that 30% of household income, the HUD standards are 30% of household income. Is that standard for rent slash mortgage only, or is that inclusive of, like, utilities and things like that?
For our programs, we don't include utilities. It would be your total gross household income. You shouldn't be paying more than 30%. That's how we do our calculations for eligibility, but we don't include. Now, our ADU tenants do not have to pay for, I'm blanking out, they don't have to pay for amenities. Amenities are not included, and that's negotiated upfront. They also have the same, you know, the same type of, I don't know why I'm blanking out.
It's late, I got it.
But, yeah, so they don't have to pay amenities, so that's off the top. They do have to pay for parking and things like that, but, you know, we don't include utilities in when we do that.
All right. Thank you. You had said, I forget which goal it was, I think it is, oh, it's in pretty much any of these goals. Like, in terms of the standard or the goal for by 2040 in terms of total count of affordable units, do we know, do we know now, like, how many affordable units are in the city?
Yes, I can tell you that. And this is on page 39 of the report in every, so we currently have 216 affordable units. And so if we were going to raise it from 3% to 6%, then we would need to add an additional 228 units by 2040. And so that's where we are, so.
So you said 228?
Yeah, so we would need to do 110 between 30 to 40% AMI, 110 between 50 and 60% AMI. We don't need any more units at 70 to 80%, and then 9 at 90 to 110%.
What page are you on, Dana?
You said 39.
What's that? What page are you on in the?
This is on the actual report, page 39 and 40, and these are the.
Oh, it's at the end?
That the Housing Commission.
Oh, in the appendices?
It's not in the presentation.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know.
Okay.
Ah, yeah, I was, I was wondering about these counts. I don't think I made it down to these.
I think it's in their report, not the staff report.
The actual report?
Yep, yeah, the draft chapter, or the draft, whatever, policy.
There you go. So looking at, if we're looking at a net add of 228, and the field goes away theoretically, like, it depends on what hap, like, it is slated to go away, and that's 96 units.
Yeah, but our goal is to not let.
The goal is to not let.
We can't, you know, I mean, our goal is to preserve those units, and so that that doesn't happen.
Is there, basically, I guess my question would be, is there any way to make that goal if the fields, if, if for some reason the field goes, goes away?
It would be more difficult. We do have the five quads at the Virginia Village units, so, you know, our plan there is, when we purchase those units, was to do some type of consolidation, long-range plan, so that we could build more, preserve those units. So I think it's 20 units over there, and then build more units, so that might be one way to achieve it.
Is there any sort of way, anything we're thinking about in terms of backup plans for goals around finding housing for people in the event the field? I'm, I'm trying to har, I'm, I am also hopeful we figure out a solution, but if we don't, like, is there any sort of goal for how we find space for folks who are in the field?
The city has a relocation plan, most localities have to have it, so it has, it outlines to the developer what they would have to do if something like that were to happen. So they would have to have a plan for relocation for residents if something like that were to happen.
Okay.
But like I said, our goal is for that not to happen, and that's really all I can say. We've been in contacts with the developer, and I can't really get into it, but our goal is for that not to happen. Like, we're doing everything in our power for that not to happen.
Another sort of question, in terms of the, I should have done a better job of writing down which pages these came off of. There was a goal of, in terms of the multi-bedroom, it's a two-plus bedroom.
Yes.
Solutions, has there been any pushback to that conversation in regards to, I know there's a big push around not increasing capacity or at the schools? Has there been any pushback in terms of increase, finding affordable units that were likely going to be more attractive to families?
Well, none of our ADUs are more than two bedrooms. I mean, there might be a two-plus den, but we don't have any three-bedroom ADUs. And I guess I take the thought that, you know, a two-bedroom or one-bedroom den doesn't necessarily that it's going to be a larger household. I mean, we have single people that come into, you know, our offices that need space, or, you know, at the Reed Building, we have people that move in, and, you know, maybe their household expands, or they get a raise, you know what I mean? And they may have to, to leave, and so I don't necessarily think that a larger household equates, and we're not really, for fair housing purposes, we don't really get into talking about children and families and all of that sort of thing.
Which makes sense, I totally get it. I was curious if you had received any pushback about, from anyone, or chatter from anyone about?
It was discussed last night at the Economic Development Authority meeting, but I will say, people that come into our office and are looking for affordable housing, they generally want either a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom. So those are the two things that we, so we have a need for sing, you know, singles, you know, one-bedrooms, larger households, and I'm, I'm saying two-bedrooms. And then we also have a need for units for persons at lower incomes. Like, those are the needs that we have. But we don't have any ADUs that are like three bedrooms. I think at Pearson Square, there are two-bedroom dens. They generally have the largest units at Pearson Square, so, so the, the largest we would be talking about would be two bedrooms.
Okay. That's one other question about, I missed the number you said, so I apologize.
That's okay.
You had said around the number of city employees, teachers, employees that were part of affordable housing, or that were taking advantage of affordable housing?
So, city schools occupies 15.7% of all our ADUs, and city government occupies 11.1%. So as a matter of fact, so Madera, Founder's Road 2, is about, is opening, and so we've been putting out information and publicity to schools, city employees, we sent it to the Chamber, and we have been getting a lot of calls about those units. We've already put four city employees into units, and so, I mean, it's a lot of demand out there. And the Chamber, you know, they're excited about the units because they want to house their employees, because they can be closer to where they work.
Yeah. How do we, and you said there were 700, approximately 700 people on the waitlist. Do you have any idea, or do we have any idea how many of them are schools slash city employees, or what percentage of them?
So we do it by priority. So Priority 1 is either you live or work in the city, and you're a senior or disabled. That's Priority 1. Priority 2 is live or work in the city, and Priority 3 is no relationship to the city at all. Generally, we usually do most of the placement from Priority 2. Priority 3, we rarely get to, but, like I said, Broad and Washington, we're doing Priority 3 now, because those rents are kind of high, and we've had trouble placing those, so we are doing Priority 3 there. And so, what was your question again?
I was sort of curious, like, in, in those priorities, Priorities 1 and 2, like, how many of them are city employees or school employees?
I could get that back to you, I don't have the exact.
It's mostly just curiosity, like, I don't.
Yeah, I don't have that number right now, but I, I could get that back to you.
And then how does the distribution work if somebody comes off the, the waitlist? So the, the apartments open at Madera, how do we go, how do, how do we go about assigning or picking the people who then get, is it time-based, is it just?
So people come in and they fill out a preliminary application, and that's just to get on the waitlist. So that preliminary application talks about how many people are in your household, are you employed, do you live or work in the city? And then we can determine what priority are, they are, they get on the waitlist, and then when the units become available, they're already on the waitlist, it's organized by, you know, Priority 1, 2, and 3, and how long you've been on there. So they go by your name, so a lot of times we go through the list, because, you know, you may be next on the list, but your lease is not up till four months from now, and you can't easily get out of it. So that's why we usually need about three people for every unit that we place, because it doesn't always line up, and we want to have a backup. So that's why it's good to have, you know, a full waitlist, and so.
So if a, if a place comes open, it's next person on the waitlist?
Yes.
In order, until you find someone who is ready to go?
Yes. Going through the priorities first, so.
Sorry, thank you. Last question I had was, you talked about the 10 new homes that were first-time home ownership opportunities? Did I get that, did I get that number right?
It's the Affordable Home Ownership Program.
Okay, you said, what was the timeline? You said it was two houses as of 2008, I think, and then 10?
No, so we got a grant through Amazon to do a home ownership program, and we're working with NHP, which is a nonprofit provider, as our partner. And so in the past two years, we have actually sold 10 homes. And I'm saying before that, we did not have any home ownership opportunities since the spectrum, and that was in 2008. We had eight condos at the spectrum, and since that time, there hasn't been anything for home ownership. People come to us all the time, and they want to buy, and there wasn't anything available to them till this program came on board, and so that's why, and we didn't even know if it was going to work, because we didn't know if there was going to be, you know, the market, we didn't know if there was going to be any product for us to purchase. And so the, because of this program, and we're working with the nonprofit, they can make the offer faster than, say, we would be able to do on our own, and it's worked, you know, and so that $20,000 of improvements, mostly we've been spending it on, like, HVAC, things like that, to kind of improve it so that the person can move in, and then we sell it at that reduced rate.
You sold 10 in the last few years?
10.
Wow.
And we're, we're like ecstatic, because there hasn't been anything, any home ownership. You know, people get, I mean, everybody doesn't want to rent, or you've been renting for a while, and your household is growing, and now you want to buy. So we just didn't have anything, you know, for that spectrum.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you very much for all the information. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Great. Mr. Kreisner, do you have any questions, comments?
I don't have too many. I mean, I could tell the group, you know, I can see that, having Mr. Hyer on the group, you know, I trust that, you know, the state-of-the-art in affordable housing was, was discussed and brought to bear.
Oh, yeah.
He's, he's a great resource for the city, so when we miss him on the Planning Commission, you know, we used to be able to just kind of sit back on autopilot and let him, let him handle a lot of, you know, the affordable housing discussions, so to speak. And so it was great that he participated. I mean, I think overall, I mean, I think I generally agree with, like, 18 or 19 of the goals. I mean, I, I had a question about your Goal 11, you know, when you talked about, you know, expanding, like, the homeless population in the city. I know you didn't say it in that way, but, I mean, I, you know, I guess the only concern I have with, you know, that type of, well, if we don't have the, as you, as you said, I mean, it, it, that's a multi-dimensional social problem with mental health and other services, and if the city, you know, doesn't have those resources to provide, and we, you know, sort of encourage, you know, more folks like that to, to come here, I mean, you know, then what? I mean, if we, if we don't have, you know, the resources, you know, they're attracted initially because there's a bed, and then, you know, and then during the day, you know, they're kind of turned out on the street, and I, I just, I question that. I, I don't know. I question that as a policy standpoint. I mean, it may not be a popular, you know, opinion, but I don't think I'm alone in sharing some concern about, like, trying to, like, targeting an increase in the homeless population, which would inevitably mean, you know, folks who are currently elsewhere in the region kind of coming here because, for that reason alone. I just have a concern about that. I mean, that's a different, to me, it's sort of different than enough, I mean, yes, it has a, there's a, it's a component, I guess, of affordable housing, but it's, I almost look at that as a different issue, you know, and I think it, you know, with, that maybe it should be the focus of a different kind of effort. And so that was my concern. And I know, like, there's other people, you know, you talk of people with disabilities, there are people who have zero income, who, right, are disabled or have other issues, and that's different, but, you know, when you specifically talked about the, you know, the homeless shelter, I just have concerns about it. I mean, you know, given its location, it's near all our schools, and, and I just think that, you know, you see examples of that, and I think of, you know, like, the homeless shelter in Reston, and, and, you know, what, what happens, you know, at the library in Reston. A lot of people know, you know, like, one of the, the Rex County's largest homeless shelters is, you know, in Reston, and it's right next to the library, and then, you know, it's difficult, because it's a difficult situation, you're trying to be humane and compassionate, but, you know, you have pop, large populations of folks that during the day are turned out on the street, kind of take over the library, to the detriment of, you know, folks that want to use the library, and, and it kind of becomes a difficult situation. So the point is, if we don't have the services, you know, we're a small city with limited resources for that, I just, I wonder about that. I mean, it's one thing, you know, in a larger jurisdiction where, you know, the folks are already there, and they're out on the street, and you're trying to take them off the street, but, you know, if they're not already, like, camping out in Falls Church, you know, do we want to kind of invite that population into the, into here? And that, that may sound like a cold thing to say, but it's just the reality. You know, if we don't have the resources, we're just kind of, you know, maybe, you know, it sounds like we're doing, we have a good intention, but I don't know where that gets us. So that was my question, how that, you know, what was the discussion about that particular goal as part of the bigger affordable housing debate?
I would say, so homelessness is not just a Falls Church thing, it's, I mean, folks are transitional, they're moving around, so I wouldn't say they're just coming to Falls Church, and the shelter is a winter shelter, so it's only open during the cold months.
Right.
And then, you know, during the day, they may go to a day shelter in, in Bailey's or Reston, and the city contracts with Fairfax County for a lot of our human services. So we contract with them, they have counselors that would come and meet with our homeless population, and then we have a human services specialist, Leslyn Barrow, who's also able to, you know, meet with homeless people on the street. And so, you know, when we say 0 to 30, like, even things like single-room occupancy units are something that we need. I mean, you know, if someone needs a super really low rent, even more, less than an apartment, where can they go? Right now, we provide a list of single-room occupancies that people can make use of, but that's a need too, and that would be that 0 to 30%. And so, you know, homelessness is, you know, it's a, it's a complex.
Right.
Issue. So I don't believe that we're encouraging, you know, homeless to come to the city, because that's not something we can do. People are free to go wherever they want. We do try to work with them when they come to the city. Like I said, sometimes we offer services, or we may offer housing. Like, in the past year, we offered about three housing opportunities where housing was identified, those folks could have moved into the housing, had the resources and income to do it, but chose not to. I mean, we can't force people to take advantage of the resources, and that could be mental health or whatever. You know, like I talked about, you know, your affordability, the 30%, I mean, someone could lose their job, and they could be homeless tomorrow. That could be anybody, you know what I mean? So I don't. anybody. You know what I mean? So, I don't know that we're like, you know, encouraging homelessness, but we're... And it's pretty, remained pretty steady. We've seen somewhat of an increase. And we work with people, but that's a regional thing.
Yeah.
All the localities are dealing with the same issue. And if people were to leave Falls Church, then they would just go to Fairfax or Arlington and then come back here. I mean, our homeless population, many that we work with, kind of make the rounds. You know, they may go to Reston, and then they'll go to Fairfax, and they'll come to us. And, you know, most of the people in the city are known to us. But maybe if we had some single-room occupancies with those super low rents, maybe that might be an opportunity for them to move into that unit. So, you know, that's kind of what we're advocating for there.
Yeah.
I know Phil has always advocated for single-room occupancies.
The lower rungs, right.
Super-low units.
Yeah. And I agree. And that's, again, these are all, you know, humane goals, you know? But I do think it comes with, you know, brings with it some social problems and other things that, you know, we just have to be aware of that, that we have the right services and places. I know we work with Fairfax and the Community Service Board and to provide those types of services. But it's just, again, the idea of increasing the homeless shelter and adding more beds, you know, which would, you know, I just think it's something to think about carefully. It sounds, one of the things that sounds good, you know, yeah, we're being, we want to be charitable and humane and good, but it brings with it, you know, some, unfortunately, some other consequences that, you know, that not everyone in the city might like. And so, we have to be aware of that if we're going to, you know, have that as a goal and just know that, you know, it has to be holistic programs, you said. So, to me, I just view it as a little bit different than, you know, purely, you know, an affordable housing solution. It is related, obviously. The cost of housing often can lead to homelessness. But then, the folks that typically are out on the street, I think a lot of studies have shown, it's not usually an income issue alone. It's mental illness, it's drug abuse, it's other things, not just the high cost of housing, you know? Because as you said, there are resources typically for most people. If they wanted a bed every night, there's a place they can have it. But because of mental illness and drug abuse, they don't. And people try to work with that. But it's just, to me, it's a different kind of problem that we just need to make sure, you know, we're attacking it the right way.
I will say, you know, I've worked in the city for 19 years, and I've never known of there to be any issue at the shelter since I've worked.
No, I agree. I mean, I think it fits a need, and I think it's, you know, it has been a success. I think from what I understand, I'm not aware of, you know, that it's led to a host of negative consequences for nearby residents and visitors, you know, as a result. But, you know, the idea of trying to, you know, dramatically expand it, you didn't say that, and I don't think the policy says that. It just brings with it other issues. And I just, you know, I've witnessed it in other, you know, situations in the region. And it's just something we need to be, you know, very careful about how we would go about doing something like that, in my opinion, that, you know, because of the potential for, you know, negative consequences that come along when you have that population concentrated in one spot.
Did you have a comment, Mr. Duncan?
Well, it just reminds me of something that I don't think that we've touched on. It's an important topic, obviously, to discuss and hear from the whole community on and such. Were the faith-based institutions in the city represented on your study group? I can't recall looking at the grid if...
I don't know that they... I don't remember. Yeah.
No, that's just, you know, I mean, we've...
That's a good point.
We've been in this movie before, you know, when Doolin Methodist tried to establish a more permanent homeless shelter in their facility. Gosh, I guess it's been 25, 30 years ago now. It's been a long time. And ran into, you know, considerable objections from the residential neighborhood immediately adjacent. And eventually, nothing came of it. I don't actually know what's going on at Doolin. And I think Falls Church Presbyterian had a temporary homeless shelter at some point over the winter. I saw something in the church bulletin about that, which I'd never heard of or didn't know.
No, that they had a homeless shelter.
They provided meals or something. They had some sort of wraparound services, if not housing. At any rate, that's all to just say, let's reach out to that community. We had a meeting, again, I was pretty new on council, so it's been 12 years ago at least, where we got all the faith-based groups in.
Yeah, I remember that. I planned that meeting.
Exactly. And somebody ended up yelling at me and stomping out of the room. It was not a very successful meeting. But, hey, you can always try again.
That's good feedback. I will say, they've been great partners.
Yeah. Well, in other jurisdictions, you know, there are churches that have surplus land that, you know, we know these deals. We read about them in the paper all the time. So, that's just an area. The other flash that went through my head was, does Falls Church Housing Corporation still exist and perform any function? Is it in any way related to efforts?
Yeah. So, actually, the nonprofit that we work with for our affordable home ownership program is NHP.
Yeah.
And the Falls Church Housing Corporation is a part of NHP.
A subsidiary or...
A subsidiary of NHP. And they still operate Winter Hill. And, I mean, those units are not committed, but their mission is for those units to, you know, remain affordable. So, like I said, that's a really big benefit to the city.
Yeah.
For the market rate affordable.
It's a huge benefit and shouldn't be overlooked. It's a very successful, long-term effort to integrate affordable housing into a, you know, established community. And the fact that we don't know a lot about it is a good thing, probably. It means that it's generally working okay. I know some of those units are a challenge for the mobility impaired. And, you know, the idea really is to, should be probably to get some of those folks in elevator buildings or one-level buildings where they can, you know, not have maneuver steps to get in and get around their apartments. But if Falls Church Housing Corporation is still in the game and at least is involved in the home ownership part of it, then it would be good. Okay, so, once I got...
And the city also gives them a grant.
Yeah.
We give them an annual CDBG grant that they use for maintenance and that type of thing that helps keep things affordable. So, any type of, like, windows, new windows and things like that. So, they don't have to pay for that. So, it helps to keep the property affordable.
Okay, good. Okay, turn to another page real quickly. I know Derek always used to encourage us to think about dedicated funding for affordable housing. And you alluded to that.
It came from him.
Yeah, you alluded to that on your chart, which is, you know, a good discussion to have. I mean, right now, we're basically building, certainly for multifamily units, affordable units on the backs of the market rate tenants who are paying extra, a premium, because, you know, the developer doesn't give us anything for free. They get their money back somewhere somehow. And one of the reasons the rental rates are what they are is because we've asked for more affordable units. And so, they make up the difference by charging the market rates a little higher. But did your group, besides Derek, discuss, you know, a broader sharing of the responsibility for building up the affordable fund by earmarking money from the general tax rate? Or what was the thought about how to get the money?
I know that that was discussed, but I don't, they didn't decide to make that a goal as far as increasing, you know, tax rate or that type. I don't think so. But, I mean, anything is on the table. That would have to be a discussion, so...
Yeah, I think it would be particularly if, after the buildings all stabilize, you know, the new buildings stabilize, if our rents are persistently significantly higher for rents than our neighboring jurisdictions, then that ought to be a clue to us, probably, that we should share. Right now, single-family homeowners, detached houses, don't have a lot of skin in the game of providing affordable housing. And a way to get them involved might be something worth discussing.
And our rents are comparable to neighboring jurisdictions. I don't, I mean, I've not heard that they're higher.
Okay. Well, that's a good fact to know, too, then. I wasn't aware of that. And just to close out, the question that Danny asked about the schools are also of interest. Listening to the schools present their budget this time around, they don't seem, they're not being overwhelmed with students. You know, we're getting about the number of students that we expected out of the new buildings, maybe a little fewer. You know, overall enrollment in the school system has not changed all that much in the last seven or eight years. I think in 2019, the enrollment was about 2,700. And now, it's maybe 125 above that. So, that's good. That means the plan that we sketched out works. But in listening to them appeal for more resources for their budget, what you hear something of is the nature of the student body is evolving. And so, there are more students who need different services than maybe we provided traditionally here, either language services or other special services. Is there any, was there any discussion about, you know, the kind of character of the folks who are coming in to the affordable housing units and the needs that they bring with them? Are any concern expressed about that, or did that not?
No, because it's, I mean, it's diverse. It's everybody. You know what I mean? I wouldn't say that there's one particular type of person that needs affordable housing. I mean, the people that are on our waiting list are a range of everything, ages, race, incomes.
Good, okay. Well, that's, that's good to know and information that I think would be good to share with the community, because, you know, that's my experience, you know, just having...
That people think that.
Having a son and soon-to-be daughter-in-law who, you know, have standard sort of jobs, you know, and they've got steady incomes and so forth, and yet are challenged to find housing, certainly to buy housing, but even to rent housing that's affordable in this area. And, you know...
Yeah. And like, what I talked about, like, the city employees and schools employees that are making use of the program. And like I said, the chamber is very, I mean, they feel like this is a way to get workers to come to the city.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So, it benefits everyone.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate the indulgence.
Great. Thank you. Well, I have a few, a few comments and questions myself. So, first of all, thank you for bearing with us and for all this great information in the presentation. I think, big picture, like, these really seem like the right focus areas. I think the group really picked up on the right topics to focus in on. So, you have rental housing, homeownership, preserving what we have, looking at the housing stock we have, the unhoused and wraparound services, funding and governance. So, it's really comprehensive, which I really appreciated. And then also, a lot of really specific, actionable, you know, kind of smart goals for each of these, like, the things that we can really measure as a community and track. So, I'm super thrilled that you all have the dashboard in progress. It sounds like we already have a lot of really great information that I, you know, as a community member, I'd be super interested to know. Everything that you just shared about, you know, like, a quarter of all our units are going to either city or school staff, roughly. I think that's the figure that you gave. It was 15% city schools and 11% city government, roughly, right? So, I mean, I think, I think that is good for the community to know, because as I think Mr. Duncan was just saying, I think people have a idea in their minds of, like, who uses affordable housing, and it's maybe not the people that you might think it is. So, I think doing, doing everything that we can to put more of a, not a face, but like, you know, these are the kinds of people that you're interacting with all the time in your community. And we really do want them here. I think there's a really good economic case for affordable housing in our community. So, yeah. Big picture, I think you all have all of the right pieces in this, in this policy. And I think maybe our challenge as the planning commission is thinking about, once this passes, like, how can we continue to sort of refer to this policy and make sure that as we're making updates to our comprehensive plan, that we're baking in these strategies and goals into those comprehensive plan updates? Because this has implications for things like the, like, our land use chapter or facilities, community facilities, and the kinds of investments, and of course, the CIP every year. So, those are some big-picture thoughts from me. I do have a few specific questions.
Okay.
I was curious about how you got to the 1.68 million in annual funding by 2040, that recommendation. I know there was a gap analysis in there, like, sort of, this is what Arlington and Alexandria are spending. It's actually in the report, Jack, if you want to, because there's like a nice chart. It's...
Staff report?
Sorry. I'm sorry. It's in the draft chapter.
Let me turn.
In the funding, which is page 23-ish.
Yeah. Page 23. So, we looked at the current...
Yeah, it's 24. Yeah. So, I was just curious if this is where that figure came from, or maybe with inflation. So, you're recommending increasing, so we have about $500,000 today, increasing that annually by 674, which would get us to about 1.2-ish million. And so, this sort of 1.68, is that just assuming, you know, inflation, you know, by that year? Is that, is that kind of where it came from? Okay. I thought this was really helpful, you know, this comparison of, like, here's what the city is putting towards its affordable housing program, and here's what these other jurisdictions are. I was wondering if you looked at jurisdictions that were a similar size to the City of Falls Church? You know, it might be helpful, because like, we are a small city. We do do a lot for an independent, a small independent city. But our, we don't have the, I'm not, and I'm all for increasing our affordable housing. I don't want you to think that I'm saying we shouldn't be. I just want to, I'm just curious about how we compare to other, maybe similar-sized jurisdictions, so...
Maybe add that to the report.
Yeah. Well, or, yeah, I mean, I guess, what is, what would that analysis tell us? And it may be that those communities are hard-pressed to make these kinds of investments that some of our larger neighbors are able to make. But, yeah, just for my own curiosity. And then, and speaking of that, that sort of like comparison with the neighbors, I was wondering if that might be helpful, you know, in the, as we're thinking about how to grow the, you know, our, the services that we're providing to the unhoused and the wraparound services? Like, can we look at other jurisdictions and similar-sized jurisdictions? How many beds do they have? What kind of, what kind of funding for support services are they providing on a per capita basis? Because that might give us some guidelines on how other communities are funding these needs in Virginia.
I do know City of Fairfax has a day shelter.
They do. Yeah.
So, I mean...
Yeah. I think that's a definite need. And I'm a big, I'm a big fan of the SRO. I think it is really important to help people kind of, you know, have a path out of being unhoused. And if, and if it's a really big leap to get to that studio, then I think it just makes it a lot harder. So, as a community, I think we need to think about how we can make that a little easier. I was also curious about the big-picture goal that you had for the ratio of affordable units of our total housing stock. It was, so we're at about 3% now, and your, the recommendation was to go to 6% by 2040.
Yeah.
So, that's a doubling. In terms of units, we have about roughly 500 units? Or is it, is it more than that now?
Housing, I think it's about, let's see, let me go back to this.
Maybe it was only 250, actually, and the recommendation is to get to 500.
So, we wanted to double that.
Okay. Okay. I was just, I was just curious, is that, is that also something that you, the recommendation came from, kind of looking at what other jurisdictions are doing? Or is there kind of a best practice for the share of our total units that should be affordable? Or what was that?
I think we kind of looked at what the loss is going to be and, you know, trying to increase from, I mean, just, if we keep things the way they are and doubling, look at population growth and all of that kind of thing. But I do know that they kind of looked at other jurisdictions as well.
Okay. I mean, obviously, there's a need. If we have 700 people on a waiting list, that's another figure that I'd love to see in that dashboard. You know, how, how much demand is there and at what, at what levels? You know, you just told us that there are 700 people on our waiting list, and half of those are below 50% AMI. And that, you know, is something that I think we just, the more the community can be aware of that, I think, I think the better. There are a couple mentions of the accessory dwelling program, that I think this was written at a time when it was still under consideration. And now that it's passed, you might want to kind of just go back and look at the references to that program and just update them, you know, to acknowledge that it's, that it's now passed. I mean, I would be a big fan of figuring out a way that we can maybe incentivize homeowners to make some of their accessory dwellings affordable. So, I think there could be a policy solution that we should consider as a community, you know, as part of this, as part of this policy plan. know, as, as part of this, as part of this policy plan, we could make a recommendation that we, we investigate that. And then, yeah, just on, on everything that Mr. Duncan just said about school capacity, I think, I just read that it's, we're good through 2045. And I think the other point I would make is, you know, I've done like a little bit of analysis. If you think about the, you know, relative cost of a student, 20,000-ish a year, which, you know, the median homeowner is not paying that much in taxes. Maybe they are if they have a really large house, but they probably also have multiple kids in the school. So if you think about it, you know, the, the kids that are, that are in our multifamily buildings are actually kind of underwritten by the commercial development in those buildings. So they're actually kind of cheaper for the community to educate than students that are coming from single family homes. So to, to me, I think actually we should, we should be having, creating more larger units for students to live in. I think that also would be good for our school community, welcoming new, different kinds of, of students. I know these units are expensive, but they're not as expensive as the 1.5 million or $2, $2 million homes.
Also, like I said, we kind of talk about households, not really children.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, we might have, we have lots of people that come in and there are two people that want to rent a unit and their roommates. And it doesn't necessarily mean that-
Their family.
It's going to be, you know, kids going into the school system.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's an affordable way to live is to have a roommate. I mean, I had two when I was first.
I had four. I had four.
I wouldn't assume.
For sure, yeah. Yeah, I think, I just think the student is, the student issue is, is something that is salient for the community, but, but that's my perspective, actually. I think we should be moving more of our, our student body to, to multifamily buildings because the, they're underwritten by the commercial. That's not possible in single family neighborhoods. Let's see. I think, I think that is, oh, actually, I did have a question about the, there was a mention of the, of developing or establishing an affordable condo or townhome policy. Can you talk a little bit about that? I wasn't sure what that was. It's a, let's see. Strategy A, it's on page 14. Incentivize the development, it's goal five under homeownership. And it says incentivize the development of affordable ownership units and reduce barriers to entry for new homeowners. This goal will help develop a more cohesive strategy for ownership units in new developments. And then strategy A was establish an affordable condo, townhome policy. So I just didn't, I didn't really know what that meant. Is the idea that like as, you know, like the spectrum, you mentioned the spectrum earlier, that was built and we were able to get some affordable condos out of that.
There. I, you know, I'm going to have to do some research on that one. Affordable, I know one thing that's kind of prohibitive is the condo fees for a lot of condos to, to make them affordable because, I mean, our folks still have to pay the condo fees. And some of the newer condos, it's cost prohibitive for them to live there because the condo fees are so-
Are really high, yeah. Yeah, there's a lot of amenities that are baked into these buildings now that people have come to expect. Yeah, it makes it hard for sure.
Definitely. I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, sure. No, I was just curious. I mean, I think it's a, I think it's a, a good idea, affordable condos and townhomes. I just didn't know what a policy would look like exactly. That would be part of sort of like a multifamily development that was a condo development or one that included townhomes, like what's the one on North Washington that had some townhomes associated with it? And I think some of those are affordable.
Northgate?
Or Cafe Kindred is, yeah, Northgate, yeah.
Yeah, the condos aren't affordable.
They're not, okay.
Rental units.
Okay.
So would the policy possibly be that we, the city covered the fees for residents of condominiums?
Condos or townhomes, yeah, that's what I was just wondering.
Take some of the, take some of the housing fund money and apply it to-
Amenities.
Essentially a subsidy to help, you know, reduce the cost to the condo owner to just the unit itself as opposed to the extras.
That might be an idea. I know that, like I said, our folks do not have to pay amenity fees.
Yeah, right.
And all the localities have tried to negotiate to get condo fees at a lower rate and it's not really a way to do that currently.
No, yeah, they don't, they don't want to do that because-
They have to maintain those buildings too.
We probably don't want them to, yeah. I mean, we want those buildings to be well maintained. The cost of maintaining the buildings increases, so it's better paid for if you're going to subsidize it by the public sector rather than requiring it of the private sector because encourages them to cut corners.
Right. Okay, I do, I just realized I have two, two more, two more small questions. One, that was interesting what you told us about the Broad and Washington studio units not renting because they're too expensive. Is that because the, like the rents in that building are higher over, like than other buildings or is it because they're studios, they're too small?
It's because the units are at 80% AMI. So normally we would do lower than that, but in order for us to get 10% higher than our normal standard, which is usually was about 6%, that type of thing, we, I'm saying we, council negotiated so that those additional units would be at 80% AMI.
Okay.
And so therefore the rents are higher and we can't rent them.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I was just wondering if, because I know, I know we're making good guesses. We have, we know who, who's, where the demand is coming from, but, you know, if it's not working out, is there, is, is there an opportunity to turn those units back into cash and loo, you know, so that we would, and I, I, I think, I want the units, obviously, but if they're not renting and we don't anticipate them renting.
So currently we are, we have it with the attorney to, to find out what we can do. Is there any type of, I mean, we have a period of time where they have to remain affordable before they would, you know, convert to market rate or that type-
Aren't they in perpetuity, those units? I thought everything we were negotiating now was-
They are into perpetuity, but I'm saying for them to get tenants in there. I mean, they're not going to allow the units to sit there for like five years and rent-
I wouldn't think so. It's not good for anybody.
But this has happened before. So at, not Broad and Wa, South Washington, where Harris Teeter is.
Oh, West Broad?
West Broad, excuse me. We had units that were going up to 110% when that building first opened. And I think it was kind of like a downturn when they first opened and they were having trouble renting those units. So they reached out to us and asked us if they could rent the 110% units at 90% AMI. And of course we were like, oh, yeah.
Yeah, please.
So they did that to rent the units. They were also having trouble renting their market rate units. And my understanding is that the market rate units over at Broad and Washington, you know, are high and, you know, they're not filled either. So we're hoping that maybe we can do some type of negotiation like that. Like that's the hope because that really worked when we did it the last time.
With West Broad.
Even though it came from the developer.
Yeah, well, they're, I mean, they don't want to lose the, the money, right, on those units, even if it's, you know, less than they, they would make as an affordable, with the affordable requirement, it's still, it's still money. Okay, well, good luck.
Okay.
And then I, I guess my, my only, my last question is, I know we held the community, a community forum a week ago. I wasn't able to attend. What kind of feedback or questions were you hearing from the community?
It was great because everyone there was a renter and so they kind of gave us, we broke up into sections and we, you know, like I have a whole list of feedback and I can get that to you, haven't typed it up yet.
That would be great. I'd love to see that.
I am filling in for Brendan Woodley, who is the housing development specialist-
Yeah.
Who has been out and he just got back and so I'm going to pass this project to him as soon as possible.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Because I have housing and human services that I'm kind of trying to manage. But as soon as, you know, he's up and running, then he's going to type up that feedback and that'll be a part of our plan. And when we come back to you all, well, because we're keeping a track of all the comments that we've received and so we'll provide that.
Great. That would be great. I'd love, I'd love to see those questions and comments from the community.
Was that, was that the meeting that I went to?
Yes.
Was that, was that just a week ago? It seems like that was like last-
Yeah, I think it was last, last Wednesday.
About two weeks ago.
Yeah, it's got to be longer than that.
Oh, that's right, because it was before our, our last meeting.
Yeah, I wasn't in Tennessee that long, yeah. Yeah, I thought it was a good, I mean, the dialogue was robust. There, there were not a lot of people there, but they had things on their mind and there was a lot of things being written down on the poster board on the wall. So hopefully there's stuff that'll come out of it that would be of interest.
They were pretty, you know, in line with a lot of things that we had in our policy. They felt like we covered the major areas, but they had a lot of specific items, you know, that we want to take a look at. And our plan is to go to, we'd like to go to Winter Hill, gets, you know, some senior perspectives. And we did have, you know, we want to, we've already heard some feedback from the field, but maybe get some more of those residents and things like that, so.
Yeah, it's important constituencies, definitely. All right, Mr. Stevens.
Yeah, I just thought of one additional question. It's relative to the aging in place goal. And I've seen this not in Virginia, but in other states, a program, it's usually referred to something like homestead programs. I'm just wondering if you're familiar with that and did that come up in your deliberations?
I'm not sure what that is.
Well, basically what, what it is, is you, it's like proposition 13 out in California. You kind of freeze the, the tax, property tax rate and it's, it's aimed at lower income, older people who are on fixed incomes. So a lot of them have a problem, obviously in Falls Church, because we keep, you know, raising our property taxes every year. And so homestead programs are generally designed to kind of level out their taxes, keep it at one level, which presumably matches their fixed income and therefore they can stay in their, their homes longer.
Yeah, I'll have to look into that. I know we have rent relief and we have several people in the city that get, you know, you know, a subsidy kind of at the end of the year to help with their rent, mostly seniors. And then we have tax relief through the tax office that, you know, also it sounds similar to what you're saying.
Yeah, in this case, they, they obviously continue to be paying taxes. It's just, they would get relief from, you know, successive increases over time.
I'm going to look it up. Homestead tax relief.
It's a rebate, right? It takes the form of a rebate sometimes?
Uh, it may. The one I'm familiar with, they just kind of freeze your, your rate, you know, if you're qualifying, it's obviously not available to everybody. It's, it's very limited, but it's, it keeps your tax rate constant.
Okay. Yeah, we do have a relief program in the city.
We have a tax relief program.
Yeah, and deferral. Same thing for autos, I think, just on our website. Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Jones or comments tonight? I hope this has been helpful.
Yeah, this is great. If you guys think of anything else-
Yeah.
Just send it to us or send it to Jack and then he can send it, or Emily and then they can send it to us, to Brendan.
Or to Brendan, yeah. I hope he's back on his feet soon for your sake. All right, well, thank you so much for coming out and sharing all this with us. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. And thank you for filling in.
Yeah, yeah.
Derek.
I'm a poor imitation of Mr. Hyrum, but was happy to help.
He was, whenever people were getting off track and going off on tangents, Derek would bring us all.
He would. He doesn't have a lot of patience for just, yes.
That was needed.
Yeah. That's good. Let's get busy here, people. All right. All right, thanks so much, Dana.
Thank you.
Nice to see you. Okay, with that, I think we can go on to our information items. Any planning commissioner reports? I delivered our annual report to council. Mr. Stevens attended. I asked you to-
You did a nice job.
Do a report on, on what was shared, because I was, you know, I think I took some notes and then I threw them away, so. I recycled them, actually.
One of them was a speaker series, you know?
Oh, yeah, Letty asked if we could bring the speaker series back. I actually reached out to the Incremental Development Alliance to see if they would come out and speak to us, because I think they're doing really interesting work. And I think they could really speak to a lot of the barriers that are in place that are maybe preventing some of the incremental development that I, a lot of us would probably like to see in Falls Church City, but nobody wrote me back, so.
Maybe now that we have an accessory dwelling code to get a developer to come in and evaluate it.
The code or the?
The code, yeah.
The code?
Right.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, somebody told me, somebody on the staff told me that there's some interest that's been expressed in accessory dwellings already and been curious to follow that.
That was going to be my follow-up question. Was there any, like, has anything happened since?
Isn't it, I thought it wasn't on the books for 30 days. Is it official?
Yeah, but people know that we did it.
Well, yeah.
I spoke with our zoning administrator a couple of days ago and there's been no applications as of yet. But you might be right that it's a little too early for it.
Is it, is it official, Mr. Trainer? Is it, or Mr. Fuller? Is it in the code?
I know we set up all the paperwork, everything's in the system. I don't know whether it's, it's in effect. I assume it is by now, so.
So it was 30 days and what was that vote, April 6th?
Yeah.
April 14th?
So if-
Oh, so maybe not. Maybe next week.
So it could be another week, but, but I know we have everything set up and all vetted, so we're ready for any application on it, you know, form, system-wise, so.
Okay.
Was anybody able to, I was out of town, attend the ULI function that Jim has recognized at?
Yeah, were you able to attend Jim's recognition, ULI?
You invited to that?
No, the one with Letty is next week.
Yes, there's, that's the-
You did. Mr. Fuller was there.
I was there.
Yeah, good.
Letty was there, Wyatt was there.
Good.
Some, Henry, Laura from staff and Carrie. So we were well represented. And then the neat thing was both his daughter and son are in the real estate development business and they're ULI members and they surprised him and did the intros for him at the podium. So, and then he, he did his three-minute speech, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, it was a nice event, yes, thank you.
That's good.
Great. Anything else from anybody?
Is the College for Smarter Growth event, that's next week, right?
Uh, 12th, I think, or it's Monday.
No, that's probably a separate item, but yes, let's talk about that for a second too. But the College for Smarter Growth event is next Wednesday?
It's next week.
Next week.
I believe it's the 14th.
You have to bar your way into that too.
It's $100.
$100. Until they up our salary.
Oh, there you-
Rich for our blood.
I, that, maybe that's an update. That letter, letter was sent on the behalf of the planning commission requesting the council look at the planning commission's compensation when they look at their own compensation later this year, so we'll see.
Bravo.
Thank you for sending that.
The chair and Brett and everybody for that. And Danny suggested-
Yeah, thank you for advocacy.
Danny, so the Paragon Theater Tour is on, I got the email on his way.
Monday at 4 o'clock, if anybody wants to go. I believe it's Founders Row Two and the theater.
Oh, wow.
I'm going to miss all of these events. I'm out of town all next week sadly, so.
I'm supposed to drive a soccer car.
Take pictures.
I hope they serve popcorn. I'll eat popcorn for you.
You'll save me some stale popcorn?
Yeah, I'm only going if I get one of those giant yellow bags.
Amazing, I mean, there was, there were a lot of times where we never thought the theater would ever happen.
Yeah.
I mean, there were, I mean, a lot of folks thought, a lot of folks thought that, oh my God, that was generally the consensus that it would never happen.
There were probably three people.
I don't wanna jinx it, because it's not open yet, the first movie has not been shown, but-
Still 14 days or whatever.
Yeah, but I saw them, like, hiring and training people in there, and, you know, that lobby bar area they have going on, so it appears to be on the cusp of being a reality, which is very exciting.
Very exciting, let's hear it for that.
Yeah.
Okay.
You had something, Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, I attended the EDA meeting last night, and they covered a whole host of issues, but one item, I thought, is something that we would probably want to track, and that is, they're looking at the Commercial Property Tax Abatement Program. This has to do with older, smaller buildings that offers an opportunity for a tax abatement. Apparently, it hasn't been used very much, and so, the EDA members are interested in taking a look at the program to see what might need to be changed to make it more useful. It's particularly of interest, given the, kind of, the changeover at Brown's Hardware and some of those other stores on, you know, that are in that kind of area where there is interest in maintaining those buildings. And so, the thought was that this type of a property tax abatement program could be useful in maintaining those, so. They just brought it up and discussed it, so they've got to work on it yet, but I thought I'd mention it, something of interest to us. That's it.
Yeah, a lot of change in that area, Antigannex and Brown's, yeah. Thank you. All right, I think that's it for us. Mr. Fuller, I see we've received a late-breaking memo on SB 974, so I hope you'll go through that, but please proceed with the director's report.
I will. First of all, I'll give you an update on the planning director recruitment. Mr. Stevens and I served on a panel where we looked at the technical side, and there was a second panel that looked at the leadership management, and so, those recommendations were provided to the city manager, who, my understanding, will be, you know, interviewing the three finalists, and then making a selection, and so, we should, you know, finalize that in the next 30 days or so, so. Anyway, just wanted to share that update.
I'm sure that will be a relief for-
It's exciting, yes.
Especially you.
And I appreciate, you know, having a planning commissioner also, you know, on the panel, I think that was, that was great.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens, for stepping in to do that.
When you don't have a daytime job, you get more time for it.
I know, really sorry, I can't-
You got lunch, yeah.
That's right.
We did. So, anyway, so, I'm looking at our upcoming agenda, the next meeting on May 21st, we do not have any agenda items, so there will be no meeting, and so, we'll have met once this month. Our next meeting will be June 4th, we have a work session on the rezoning at 106108 South Lee Street, and it's a preliminary work session, and then we'll also-
What is that? What, those are residential properties, what is the?
T-zone.
What's the rezoning?
It's a, it's a residential, it's a request for a rezoning to T, yes.
I hadn't heard.
Yep.
T, they want to rezon to T?
Yes.
It's, yeah, it's currently residential, but it's T on the future land use map.
Yep.
Okay, is that a recent change, or has it always been T on the land use?
No, those, we went, looked back, back in 2005, those were the designations on the future land use map for T, transitional use.
That was a 2005 change?
Yeah, so, yeah, well, there was about 50 parcels looked at, and I don't think it was necessarily a change, but anyway, there was a number of changes back then, and so, basically, there's a uniform depth coming off of Broad Street for commercial use.
Right.
And so, I think that was part of it, kind of filling in those gaps, and so.
Could be interesting.
Anyway.
Is that the origin of the, interesting of the, because it's a little uneven, the number of parcels that are zone T on the future land use map?
Yeah, in that particular block, there was like four, I believe, you know, where they were, it was kind of like, you know, missing teeth where they were kind of filling-
Across the street, it's a single family, is it across the street?
I think it might be.
Zone to be T as well?
I think it might be on the, on the-
Self is residential now, right?
Yeah.
Well, it's a single-family detached, I mean, I wonder, like, across the street, like, because it's only those two lots.
Yeah.
Going back from the, I don't know what we call that building, but.
Yeah, so anyway, so we've, we've looked at it preliminarily, it'll be going to the council the week before, I think the principals were on vacation, this would have come probably a couple weeks later to you, but we didn't want to delay, you know, six weeks on it, so, so we've scheduled it for July 4th, and we'll be, you know, using the work we did for the council the week before to tee that up quickly. So, anyway, we'll have a work session on that, and then, Fellows Park, they're working on a, kind of a site plan for that recreational facility, and as part of it, they need to do subdivision consolidation, and so, that will be coming before you as a subdivision, and so, we'll have a work session on that on June 4th, and then, that would tee up two weeks later for final action on that subdivision. And then, later, their kind of site development plan, there's not really any structures, other than maybe, you know, some type of outdoor shelter or something, we haven't seen the details, so, I anticipate there will be a basic site plan that would come at a later date.
That may be our, well, I guess it's only a work session, but if SB, depending on what happens with SB 974, maybe that's our last subdivision.
No, I'm gonna go over that now.
Oh, we're gonna keep subdivisions now?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
I haven't read the memo yet.
We're gonna talk about that now, yeah.
Okay.
And so, then, on June 18th, as I mentioned, would be final action on that subdivision, and then, the affordable living policy would come back on a work session, and then, on July 2nd, we have the Broad and Washington easement, it's a vacation that the developer needed to do, and so, it's a process to do that, so. That's basically the schedule coming up. Moving to the legislation at the state level, as you're aware, the legislation on SB 974, it's to be enacted in July 1, and that directly impacts the city in terms of, they've provided for a designated agent to review and act on subdivisions, and also includes site plans and plans of development, and plans of development, we're still trying to figure out what the context is at the state level, and whether that is the same as some of the things we have, like grading plans or something like that, so. Site plans and subdivisions are clear to us, and then, this legislation, as you're aware, does not include the planning commission or the governing body as being able to serve as a designated agent for the locality, and the only exception was if the locality is 5,000 in population or less. So, this designated agent would have the ministerial authority, and that's typically reserved for the planning director or similar agent. In addition, there was a second piece of legislation that was a minor change, but is also something that will be rolling into these zoning text amendments, and that was HB 2660, and that relates to the time period on all final action on subdivision plots, and it also tends to list everything, and so, it threw in site plans and plans of development. And that's been 60 days, and we've always targeted that, and they've reduced that now to 45 days, and so, it becomes the kind of thing where, you know, if they're not in final form, then we'll just have to start denying and then specifying what's missing, and then they would come back in and we would do everything all over again until we get it in final form and approvable. And typically, it used to be where, if we didn't act within the 60 days, then they could petition a 10-day period in which the planning commission could take action in a special meeting and act on something that was pending. We've, you know, had a practice where we felt like sometimes, you know, the developers are, you know, don't resubmit right away, and instead of forcing a, you know, a denial, we try to work with them, and so, sometimes, you know, the period goes beyond 60 days, but that's always been our target for site plans and subdivisions, so, anyway.
And that was Marcus Simon's bill?
This was, yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, and so, so, we met this week, staff did, with the city attorney and the city management, and we collectively discussed the new legislation and its context, and the impact on the city's subdivision site plan processes and approval authorities. Looking at the city charter and related code applicability, we discussed that and talked about issues and next steps, and we also talked about HB 2660, which identifies the limiting of the timing change to, from 60 to 45 days. So, in terms of the resulting preliminary discussion, which we're still doing some research and will be starting to draft some code language, but the subdivision party, authority, the initial review, the city charter indicates that the planning commission is the platting subdivision authority of the city, and would retain that authority even under the new legislation, SB 974, and specifically, our charter says, the planning commission shall be the platting commission of the city, and so, that's our preliminary understanding.
That's good news, but also, how does that jive with the very specific line, designated agent does not include the local planning commission? Is basically the city charter overrules state law?
Yes, that's, basically, city charter's kind of the highest, state law's the second, and then, city code would be the third. There's exceptions to that, there could be some historical pieces to it, but generally, that's how it is, so, we're a Dillon Rule state, and so, if we're explicitly given authority to do something, then that tends to be the lead on it. Now, if our code's silent on some piece of that administrative or so, maybe how we do advertising or notice on it, then we would default to the state code in many cases, because they've specified something that would relate to that authority that we have, and we're silent on how we, you know, do notice or something to the public, and so, you know, the state code does come into play sometimes in a secondary fashion, but when we looked at the site plan, that is not in our charter, and it's not specifically specified as an authority of the planning commission, and so, SB 974 provides for a designated agent, so the council would then need to authorize who would be the designated agent, and typically, as I stated before, that would be a planning director or similar agent, it'd be administrative staff review. So, then, the other thing we noted was the special exception site plan, the SE SP that we approved West Falls with, that has basically a combined SE and site plan procedure all in one, and so, that was to expedite and not have two processes, and so, we may have to decouple that and break that out. I mean, that was very specific to West Falls, that legislation really can't be used anywhere else, for the most part, and so, you know, we would have to look at that code and possibly break that up into some form of an SE and site plan, so. In, looking further, staff is, what we're doing is preparing a list of the code sections that are related to the site plan and subdivision approvals, and then, we're gonna continue interim staff meetings with the city attorney this month and key staff management, and then, you know, continue to refine the scope of the legislative impact and the required code changes, and then, we're gonna draft code amendments of the impacted sections that are consistent with the new state code. And then, we would also develop administrative procedures for the designated agent on how we'd implement this. City attorney will continue to review and research, and then, the, also review the draft code that staff will be doing. So, we'll be working on that in May, and then, in June, this will come before the city council, they will have a preliminary briefing on the results of the general assembly on the 27th by Cindy Mester, and this will be part of that conversation, obviously, and then, in June, you know, there'll be some work sessions, and then anticipate a first reading, and then, you know, action with the planning commission. This schedule that I listed in here is tentative, I haven't run it by anybody else, but, you know, in working through it, it works, and it does go to the first week in July, but, you know, I think that's about the best we can do, and at this point, you know, hopefully we won't have a site plan that we have to deal with in the middle of it, but I think we can have it in place by the middle of July, so, I think we've got to do a little more research and kind of pull things together. But anyway, so that's, that's the preliminary findings, and I think there's a little good news there, that subdivisions stay, and then, the site plan, we'll continue to look at that, we're trying to define what plans of development are. A lot of times, the state code and the, you know, other localities, what they call something by name can be very different, and so, we'll work with the city attorney to kind of define that. The state tends to throw everything in the paragraph, so, it can cover everything, and so, anyway, we'll, I mean, but obviously, this was specific more to plots and site plans, so. Anyway, I have an electronic version of this with links to all the code, so I will have that sent out tomorrow, and so, you'll have the benefit of having this document with the links that you can click on, and then, I plan to do an update, you know, probably by the end of the month of kind of where we are, and then, we'll have draft language in June, and then, I'm suggesting that we have a joint work session with the council, because of the need for moving things along, and when they have their work session, that you guys be invited as well, so, I'll continue to push for that and communicate that as well. So, anyway, so, that's the initial findings, and so, we're continuing to work on this staff this month, and then, you know, you'll see this formally in June, and then, probably have final action in early July, so.
Great.
Any questions now for me?
No, it's a really comprehensive memo, any questions?
Comprehensive, therefore, I can't understand a word of it. So-
Ask me any question.
I know, any question, we don't have here all night. So, we have charter authority to do subdivisions, but not site plan review?
Yeah.
So, tell me how that affects, like, the day in the life of, I mean, what's an example, what's an example of, I mean, another example?
So, EK and I would have gone to the designated agent.
Would have been the staff level, yeah.
Yeah, so now, in other words, the-
And, yeah, you can see our site plan, so, what would we do in a subdivision instance?
What we've always done.
Yeah, the subdivision would not change.
What's an example of?
Except for the timing on it, we would be looking at targeting 45 days versus 60, but that would be the only change.
What's an example of the subdivision action that we've taken?
We have one coming up with the Fellows property, where we're doing a consolidation plot for that property.
Yeah.
So, that would be actually something that would happen before July 1, then, it could be, you know, a pipe stem or some other lot being divided within the city.
We've had a couple, we had one-
I was gonna say, in my, in my time, I-
The other side of Oak Street School, we had a subdivision a couple years ago.
Was it a lot line boundary change?
It was technically, it was, it still was a subdivision, though, like, so, they were moving a lot line, they actually already had two lots, but they were adjusting the lot line, and that was a subdivision. That's when we're changing lot lines, basically, so we're not, if somebody has a large enough piece of land and they can create another lot out of it to build the typical residential of it.
I was afraid that's what you were gonna say.
Yeah.
Sounds exciting to me.
We don't see, we already have that authority, we don't see very much, very many, we do see some times.
So, has there been any discussion, I mean, I thought initially there was some discussion of, oops, you know, can we get a do-over on this and, you know, have it increased to, jurisdictions with 20,000 people, let's say, I mean, how many, how many people are in the basket that we're in, and is there any discussion being given to trying to change the basket? I mean, I, just the notion of this, the planning commission not being involved in site plan review seems like one of the biggest changes in the history of the city.
Perfect.
It is for us, for sure, I mean, larger jurisdictions, a lot of times, do have their site plans and subdivisions done by staff.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So, it kind of, I think the intent was to bring smaller jurisdictions in line with what larger jurisdictions do, you know, you know, again, the problem, in Richmond, I mean, this is just an editorial, but they, you know, they have a short session, this year was a really short session, you had a bunch of part-time legislators that show up, they don't know a lot about planning and zoning, for the most part, and they just throw a lot of stuff out there, and it's like a race to see what'll stick, what'll get through committee, and a lot of times, something like, you know, people don't have a lot of time to think about it, research it, some, you know, cities and counties lobby and try to make things less bad, if they can.
I asked Marcus about this after it was done, and, you know, I didn't talk to Cindy while it was being done, but, yeah, everything that you say is my impression of how it got done, and it was meant, it was aimed at trying to encourage housing, new housing by Van Valkenburg, and we are, we are part of the collateral damage of that noble effort.
In theory, it's like streamlining, and so, therefore, like, it would, you know, it would streamline the process for somebody to build, because they could just go through staff and not have to go public hearing and take longer, and, so, you know, that was the theory, and that's been a popular trend in certain circles in Richmond, you know, the idea of trying to, like, you know, take away some regulation, you know, related to land use review and land use and zoning controls to facilitate housing, you know, first and foremostly.
After, after doing battle for 20 years, to try to get things moving.
It's an interesting change.
We got things moving, and now, we're being ganked back from, huh, well.
Yeah, so, I mean, the only hope would be like other jurisdictions like us, who are now, you know, have been affected, but larger jurisdictions who are already doing it that way don't care.
They won't care.
So, it's smaller jurisdictions, you know, if they could be able to lobby to undo it or change it next year and raise the cap to a higher number, you know, and say, and argue that in a small jurisdiction, it's not a burden, and we actually had a lot of benefit, which I think is true in Falls Church, you know, largely, but.
Yeah, right, well said.
But, you know, that, that would be the way to do it, you know, to lobby Simon and others of our state legislators to say, well, wait a second, Falls Church, you know, we're only, whatever we are now, 15, 17,000, and, you know, it really wasn't a burden here, and it was helping, and now, now we can't, you know, can't do that, and staff, you know, it's gonna be overwhelming.
So, Gary, is it your impression that, I mean, you probably can't speak to this, but, is that, is that, is that a track that anybody's even talking about going down, like- anybody's even talking about going down, like in parallel to all these changes that you're trying to make by the middle of July?
What, Commissioner?
No, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do that, we're gonna try to keep things the way they are.
I think, what, um, Commissioner Krasner just indicated is the, the only path that we're aware of now would be to lobby now, for the next general assembly session in a year, and, you know, ask to raise the, you know, population threshold to 20, 25,000 or whatever. And that way, you know, we could get the authority back for site plans. So, uh, but there is no quick fix with the enacted legislation taking effect in July, so.
Okay, all right, well, thanks for.
I'm just curious whether you've thought through, like, would this designated agent handle waivers? And if so, what would the process be for deciding?
Yeah, the, the, the code right now, um, basically at the end of the site plan code, it talks about any authority granted to the planning commission is then the authority of the planning director when they're doing an administrative site plan approval. And in this case, it flips it to where the designated agent would potentially be the planning director or other similar agent. And so, um, the authority is in there now. I know there was some discussion, uh, there was some action down in Southern Virginia about waivers that, um, was kind of adverse, and so I don't know if that'll come up in the, this, this discussion or so forth, but, um, anyway, so. But right now, the code provides for the, um, planning director to do that specifically.
Yeah, I mean, what, what option would be? Removes the, removes the public from, from being involved in that kind of decision-making, so.
I mean, one option would be in our code, you know, like, again, right now, the code delegates all, you know, we, you could say in the ordinance that certain waivers, you know, are, make them like special use permits or special exceptions, you could say, you know, all right, if you're fully by right, you know, the site plan can, you know, run administratively, but if there was a particular waiver that, you know, the city felt should have that public review, you could change the ordinance to say, to specifically prohibit the director of planning or whoever's the agent from doing that, and make that, make that modification, uh, just call it whatever you want, special exception or special permit or whatever you want. And, and so there might be a way to write the ordinance such that you could.
Is the designated agent necessarily an individual, or can we decide that our designated agent is, you know, somebody from staff and a panel of experts who just happen to be members in the community? Not serious, I mean, I, this is, this seems like desperate times here, I mean.
Yeah.
What, what about, yeah, we have, I mean, the planning commission's got plenty of other work to do without having to do site plans at all, but if, to keep the community's voice in the process somewhere.
That's the key.
You need, I mean, for God's sakes, we've got community groups for every little thing in the world, and we're not gonna have it for site plan review, that's just indefensible, it seems to me.
Yeah, I, I agree with, with, um, you and, um, Commissioner Stevens. You know, I'm, I'm, that's one of my questions is, what is the public process gonna be with a designated agent?
Yeah.
And so, um, obviously, you know, we've relied on the planning commission and, and you guys have, you know, the commissioners as, you know, residents of the city to then hear, you know, developers and residents of the city and their concerns and their objectives, and then kind of, you know, use the code, you know, ministerial action for the most part, but occasionally we had waivers. And you had three types of waivers. One was, one was if you had a small site plan that didn't need to provide the 32 items that are required to submit a site plan. Then a lot of times staff would kind of work through that with them, and, you know, you know, they're adding a portico to a front of a building or something, they don't need to do all 32 items in that case, so we could, there was a waiver provision for that based on. Second one was some landscape-related buffer waivers, you know, density or, you know, the depth. And the third, we've been using the last couple of years, is the parking one, where it's, it's a modification technically, but it's the same thing as a waiver. So those are your three, uh, items that, you know, I mean, think of, you know, the last site plan we had with EK and ICE, you know, based on parking and landscaping, you know, on that small site, you couldn't meet code.
Right.
And so, anyway, those waivers are necessary to approve small sites like that, and.
For example, in Fairfax, the director can waive landscaping, but not parking, parking has to go to a public hearing at the board supervisor. So the ordinance could be crafted to do that, I think, and still stay within the new law. If we felt that there were certain things that we didn't want staff to be able to waive unilaterally, so to speak, um, and they needed a public review. There are ways to do that, to the, take back the waivers and mods, you know, if not, you can't take back the authority to approve it, but if someone wants to deviate from the code, um, you could, there's probably a way to add an element to the ordinance to require that they get a public approval or a, a board and commission approval of some kind, whether it's us, or whether it's city council, or both, there's probably a way. So something to think about as we, you know, figure it out in the coming months, that, yeah, it'll be an adjustment. I'm sure there'll be things we haven't even thought of yet that will come up as staff starts to look at their first few, first few site plans administratively, and they're like, you know, what do we do? So, you know, we'll have to, keep us in the loop, I guess. And, uh, you know, we'll see where we go.
I, 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 I plan to, and I hope there's a, you know, a way through one of these means, and we were thinking about other things on how to have the planning commission involved, and, um, you know, if he can't be direct authority, some advisory basis, so. Anyway, we'll, 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 we'll talk about that, and then I'm, I'm looking for, you know, also you to, you know, talk to your council members and, and, you know, discuss the, the objectives that you have and some ideas, and, uh, staff will be proposing, um, you know, how administratively we would implement this, and then we could always revisit it in another couple of months, and so I, I think, you know, we're just, um, gonna work through this based on the parameters that we've been given, but at the same time, uh, as, uh, Mr. Kravener, Krasner's saying, you know, there's opportunities to look at these things in different ways, and there's some secondary things like waivers and stuff, so. Anyway, um, you know, this is the only way I know, and so I've been here so long, this is the only way I've, I've ever, you know, done, you know, development review and site plans and subdivisions, so it's a, it's a, you know, big difference for me too, so, but. You know, the administrative work that's done by staff before it comes to you, you know, that's not gonna really change, other than the timing might be a little more rushed now with the, the other change, with the other bill. But other than that, and we might deny things on a few occasions just because the clock's up, and so that, that was never an objective of us, of, of ours before, we always kind of, you know, tried to just work and to get it in final form. Our goal was always to get the applicant in final form, you know, and then we had the planning commission to, uh, you know, provide a community forum to discuss it and make the final decision, so, um, yep.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Fuller, for this really detailed memo. To be continued. Any correspondence?
No, Madam Chair.
All right, I think that's it then.
Wait, stop. I know it's driving home tonight, that the Yacini Building has now got graffiti adorning its windows and walls, what's, what's going on there? Anything?
Which building?
The Yacini, the.
Oh, the bank.
Yacini Jewelers.
Former bank.
Yeah, I was, um.
The car wash.
I, I was unaware of the graffiti, but in terms of the site plan, um, let's see. They, I'm trying to recall, they, did they get approval? No, I think they're still pending.
We haven't heard from them in weeks.
We haven't heard, there was some stormwater.
Yeah, in other words, they, um, they got an attorney who then straightened them out, and so, um, they were able to kind of get all the stuff finally done, okay, it was, it was a very, it was, it's been over a year.
So they've resubmitted?
Um, they've resubmitted, and, um, no, they haven't resubmitted, we're still waiting for the final resubmission.
Okay.
That's why it's not on your agenda, so.
Right, since it wasn't on the look ahead, I was concerned that it had dropped off.
Yeah.
Yeah, I took a picture, it's, traffic was at a standstill, so I could take a picture out my window, but there's a very extremely elaborate piece of graffiti right next to the old drive-through of the bank.
It's on the bank, or on the current Yacini Jewelers?
On the bank.
No, sorry, it's on their new site, yeah, it's, it's on the bank, it's.
Someone tagged it?
More than tagged.
Oh, yeah, look at that.
That's a.
It's a mural.
It's a mural.
Public art.
Exactly.
Depending on your taste.
Anyway, well. I would, I don't know.
Unauthorised public art.
If city council is too busy with the budget and other things.
Whoever owns the property, do they own it, do we know Yacini owns the building? We should, then it's up to them to clean it up, we should probably, I'll look.
I'll send you a copy.
We should give them a heads up if they, you know, don't already know.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Presumably, they're driving by it.
I would think they would figure out soon. They, they, they're right next door.
And their business is still open.
Right.
Next to it, they should be walking by it.
Well, they are, they are next door to each other, so.
Yeah.
In terms of their existing business.
Down the way a little.
Any other final items? No? All right, then we are adjourned.